All right, good evening everybody. Welcome to the, uh, let's see, the October 18th meeting of the HADLY Select Board. So we'll call the meeting to order at 7:00 o'clock and first order of business is the consent agenda. We have approval for minutes from September 6th and 13th. We have accounts payable warrants 18, 14, 15, and 15 S as well as payroll warrants 18, 14, and 18, 15. We have a request for an extension of a lease agreement for the Koinoski property. We have a police department resignation for Officer Allen Ash. We have the requests for use of town commons by the Hopkins Academy cross-country team for October 24th. And we have a conservation commission appointment for Tony Lynn Morello. And we also have a request to accept revisions to the remote participation policy as required.
Second?
Second for conversation. Do we have an opening on the conservation commission?
Yes. You have several openings on the conservation commission.
And what's the difference on the revisions to the remote participations? Is there any difference or variations from our last time?
The only big difference is the, under the old rules, you could only invoke the remote participation policy under five criteria, and I won't list those. The revisions broaden the language so that the standard is any reasonable expectation that physical presence would be, would be difficult. So it actually makes things a little bit broader and a little bit more helpful.
Thanks for your help.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, um, we do have time for a public comment period. Does anyone here this evening for a public comment? Okay, all right, then moving along, we do have three appointments tonight. The first one is at 7:15, so we're going to hold until that appointed hour. So in the meantime, we can move forward with new business. First new business item, as everybody here is certainly aware and many people publicly are aware, one of our select board members did, uh, attended his resignation from the select board, uh, that's Donald Pipschinsky. And we certainly want to thank Donald for the time that he spent here, not only on select board, but he was the liaison for the school committee. He was very participative, um, in their meetings as well, stayed abreast of everything going on there, as well as HADLY media. Um, and he was also the, uh, HADLY representative for the Hampshire Council of Governments. So, you know, Donald's doing an awful lot of work and we want to thank him for the time that he did spend on the select board and appreciated his participation, his viewpoint. Again, there are five people here for a reason, we're not always going to agree, and it's always good to get, uh, different perspectives. So, again, want to thank, thank Donald for the time spent in Missionville.
I also would like to say that, uh, I am, I do thank him for the time he spent, but I am disappointed that he did resign in the middle of his term. I always talk to my kids, if you start something, you finish it, no matter how much you don't like it. You don't like the coach, too bad, you started the season, you still play. So, you know, when the going gets rough, you dig your heels in and you kind of just go with the flow. So, um, to that extent that I am disappointed that we couldn't have worked it out a little bit better.
Anybody else? Okay, a little bit later in the agenda, we're going to be discussing, um, the plans to, uh, we, we have some options, well, actually, we can talk about that now. We have some options relative to filling the vacancies. So, David did provide the code section, um, when we have this type of vacancy midterm. So we need to talk about the select board as well as the council of governments. I mean, we, we voted to exit, but that's not effective until 2019. So, we should still have a representative there. So I guess the question is, um, the way the language reads, and David please correct me if I'm not interpreting it correctly, but, uh, the language reads that the select board may, um, choose to hold a special election to fill the vacancies. So Donald would have had a, a full, about a year and a half, um, left here. So if we didn't fill it now, we could wait until April and have the two.
Right, so you have April 10th as your next scheduled, uh, municipal election for, for positions. You have to give proper notice, which is 64 days. So that takes you to February 6th.
Uh, I thought Jessica said that it was the end of December, or, or February.
If you, if you pulled that trigger now, then it'd be at the end of December would be your special election. You have until February 6th. Before you get it within the 64-day window, though.
Oh, for the next, got you, okay. All right, so, um, I guess I'll open that up for discussion, then what are people's thoughts on, on how we should proceed?
I don't think we should waste money. Um, it's going to cost probably about $2,500 to run a, an election for one position. I think that we could wait until April. As a matter of fact, I'm going to make a motion that we, uh, wait until April to do a year position, um, for the board of selection. And then that would be, the, what would be available in April would be two full-time positions, three-year terms and one, one-year term.
Somebody want to second that?
I will second it for discussion.
Okay, so a motion made and seconded for the discussion on that?
So we need to give 64 days, uh, in order to conduct, in order to have the election. We couldn't do it in the November ballot overrides.
No.
And we have nothing else scheduled.
Right, you need to, you need to provide enough notice, enough time for, for register, uh, enough time to file papers, the whole process.
I concur with Joyce, I think, uh, $2,500 is it. And I think we're able to pick up the slack here to be able to take care of what needs to be done.
John, you want to jump in?
Uh, yeah. In the, uh, in the event of a tie vote, uh, how does that?
Ties of fail.
I understand that, but in the best interest of the town, of the taxpayers, and the people as community, I think it's only fair to have another member here. I know it's expensive to do it right now for a year and a half term, but...
Well, I hate to say this, John, but I'm going to. A lot of times you can't vote, and then it just leaves three members anyway left to vote, which is an odd number. Um, and it's not anything against you, I, I understand your position, but again, it's not going to, think, make a difference for six months until we can, um, have the regular election in April.
Actually, the way the law is written, Joyce, that there is a tie vote, and I need to vote incapable, if I feel incapable in, to, to vote on the problem at that time, I can't. That's in front of the Attorney General's office, so...
Well, I guess I just want to think a little bit about what we have, what we have in front of us right now. So between now and, in April, we've got the FY '19 budget cycle. Um, we've, we've already gone on record saying we're going to be talking, again, just talking, this is just fact gathering right now, not recommending fact gathering, but about things like the split, possibility of split tax rate, possibility of an I-21. But, you know, I worry, I worry somewhat that there would be a perception that, um, because of John's situation, where John has to accuse, does have to accuse himself from some percentage of the votes, that it looks like they've gone down to a three-person board. And don't get me wrong, I, I don't, I don't want to spend the money either, I just wanted to be thoughtful about it, so people aren't upset thinking that, um...
Well, I think when, I think we've had this, um, same instance before, and we did wait until the spring, uh, I believe when Kate Nugent was on the board, we did wait until the following spring to, uh, to have the election. Is that correct?
I think you did that twice when Kate Nugent, uh, passed away and when, uh, O'Connor, uh, moved.
Moved. So we've done it twice before in the past.
And was there that much, much time in front?
Yes.
Yeah. Good time?
The other sort of benefit of waiting is that it gives those people who might elect to run, some time to think about what they're going to do and how they're going to do it. You know, it's immediate, you may not get as many people running.
Oh, I'm sure we'd get a few.
I, I don't know if anybody else has had a phone call about it, and I have had a couple of people call me saying that, you know, I hope you guys don't spend the money and that you...
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's kind of an, like, four, four each way, so, myself.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? Okay, motion made and seconded, then not to move forward with a, um, special election at this time and hold a position until the 14th April election? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Okay, so three months. Okay, um, let's see, we also have, um, health insurance for part-time elected officials. So I think that, David, there's a request for clarity on this, correct?
That's correct. We've given out quarterly payments to, uh, the three affected boards, um, and according to the letter of the law, Linda and Joan, feel free to, uh, jump in any time, and if you pay them anything, you've got to give them the benefit under the vote taken back in January 2010 by the select board. Um, the treasurer's offices asked for clarification as to the intent of, of the policy interpretation by the select board here. And we've made a recommendation that, uh, that because they've received the first quarter distribution, that they will continue to receive health insurance until the close, for those who receive it, uh, to receive, continue receiving health insurance until the close of fiscal year 2018, or until the recipient leaves his or her elected position, whichever occurs first.
Has, has everybody who, every part-time elected official affected by the vote received payment? I mean, is there anybody that if we, if we took the vote to say yes, absolutely, they go?
All three of them have received payment, is what you're saying.
Well, there are three affected bodies, there's the select board, there's who don't receive any of the benefits, the assessors, and the parking right commission.
They haven't all put in for, they have not actually all put in for a payment.
Well, that's why I'm asking, because I wouldn't want to take a vote and then have an outlier that, it seems like we need to deal with, um, also what the course of action would be for someone who has not received a payment this year.
Were you in touch, David? I think you sent a letter or an email?
I did send an email, but, uh, we can follow up on this. Why don't we put aside a month, hold for a little bit?
Okay, either that or vote on how to deal with the, if somebody has a vote. So, has been no conversation or...
About how to handle that? No, not specifically, that's why we were, um, assumed since they had been, since the vote was taken in April and they were entitled to the first quarter, um, that they would put in for, but they actually have not.
I mean, I'll just go on record saying that I, I wouldn't want, um, an administrative glitch to prevent, you know, to cause somebody to suddenly, suddenly lose their health coverage. But if in fact there was some sort of proper notice period, then I, I think that's fair. But, you want to hold until the next meeting?
Well, we'll hold till the next meeting to clarify if that...
And in the meantime, conversations are going to be held with people who have not put in, and we'll have that answer available.
Right.
I concur with them.
Okay, all right, so we'll defer this to the next meeting, but we should do it at the next meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, how close are we to 7:15? Pretty close. Pretty close, 7:15 appointment, okay. So, I believe the 7:15 appointment is with, uh, Pins Hadley LLC, um, and this is a request by David Green for an on-premise all-alcoholic restaurant license. So who do we have?
Good evening.
Tonight, you, Mr. Green?
No, I'm, I'm, my name is Joe Mantenelli, I'm Mr. Green's attorney. Mr. Green is here with us, as well as his wife Susan. How are you all tonight? Thank you.
Good, fine, thank you.
First of all, let me thank, uh, your staff here for coordinating this application. Uh, I recognize that the filing fee for liquor licenses is not all that great and there's work involved to get things done, so we appreciate the prompt response to the filing and the scheduling of this public hearing. Um, I'm here tonight on behalf of David, I've, I've done other licensing work for Dave, who operates, just from a little historical perspective, David operates a facility in Milford, Massachusetts, which is my hometown, where my practice is, and it's a, it's a facility much similar to what he intends to open here, which is a multi-entertainment facility with bowling, uh, laser tag, arcade type of situations.
No laser tag at this.
No laser tag here, all right. He's, uh, been in business in Milford for 12 years. I think if you were to call the town hall in Milford, you would get a very favorable report. Um, he's never had an incident there, no, no license violations, and, uh, runs a very nice establishment, but very successful. In addition, a year ago, David opened a second facility in Kingston, in a mall that is owned by the very same entities that own the mall here in Hadley. And, uh, he opened a, a facility there, much similar to the one in Milford, had a liquor license approved in, um, in Kingston, Mass. Has been very successful with the opening, and again, a license that has been not subject to any disciplinary actions. And like Milford, I think if you were to call Kingston, you'd get a paper for review there. I know that when I was in Kingston making the presentation there, that they called Milford, and so when I said that, they said, "We already called." So, I think it goes without saying. So David and his partner Jim Smith, who's not here, was a Florida resident, and Jim is a partner only on the Kingston facility, and will be on this one, his name's listed in the application. Um, had the opportunity because of the mall owners and the success that they had in Kingston, to take over a significant amount of space here in Hadley, and to recreate the model that's worked very well there. So obviously, part of this facility is a all-alcoholic beverage license, will have a full restaurant capability, submitted the floor plan with the application, obviously Dave can answer a few questions specifically about the day-to-day operations. We brought Susan along tonight because we've applied for her to be the manager under the liquor license. Obviously, uh, David is the manager in Milford, Jim is, is the manager in, in Hadley. Uh, you can't have, uh, excuse me, in Kingston, I apologize, you can't have the manager in multiple spots at the same time, and because it's always best to start a business with a family member, Susan, who's been in charge of HR for both facilities, was kind enough to donate her, uh, her attention to this facility, and she would be, we would request in, in approval of her as the manager. We hope that after a year getting the facility up and running, that we'll find a full-time manager to come in and replace Susan, that she can go back just to her, uh, her role as HR person. Um, I think we did a very thorough job in the application in identifying the source of funds. The landlord is putting a significant amount of money into the retrofit of the building. David and Jim are putting in some own personal funds, which we've listed, and in addition, they're going to obtain some loans for a lot of the restaurant equipment and, uh, the fixtures and, and fit-up. But the, the overall rehabilitation of that building is being done primarily by the landlord. We're pleased to have him do that, and we were down there tonight looking at it. Uh, obviously, we were all welcome to take a look, it's a significant amount of work that's going on there. I've looked at your agenda, and I don't mean to monopolize your, your, your meeting, um, but I just wanted to give you a little bit of historical perspective. Again, I, I've worked with Dave for a long time, so I was not comfortable coming out here. Obviously, it's a little bit of a ride up from Milford, but, uh, it's a beautiful evening, the colors gorgeous, you're a little bit ahead of us, so, uh, it was, it was really nice to come.
Paid hourly, aren't you?
Uh, yes, yes, yes. And I can answer, yes, yes, he is, yes.
Very good point, because it's four, as you know, it's four to four.
I, we're so glad that you were here. But, obviously, again, I, I know you have a busy agenda, you're a ball, I do, I do a lot of work in front of a board such as yours, so like, I know that your time's valuable too, so I'm going to stop talking and, and certainly give you an opportunity to pry us with any comments that you may have had from your local boards, and certainly have David and Susan answer any questions that you think are pertinent. I was just wondering, what, what, what spot within the mall are you taking over? What would usually be there?
Sure, uh, well, unfortunately, there was probably about seven tenants in that space, so I've had to apologize to a few of them that have relocated. I go into the, uh, you know, I know one of the more popular ones there is, uh, Moka Emporium, um, so that's really going to be where our main entrance is. So I went to saw Moe the other day, and I introduced myself and, with an apology, and said, "I'm coming in with pins." Uh, but then we take all the way, the entire food court side, from, if you look at Mokas as the main entrance, um, to the, uh, to the right, if you're looking at it, all the way towards, uh, the main corridor, that we go down to, like, say, mall offices, uh, which is just before, and will be there, the only other tenant beside us there would be 2D Free, I think, on the corner there. Uh, as you turn left and head towards Target, uh, we continue down, uh, there was, uh, touch of glass and Payless Shoes that were in those two spaces.
So not Joann Fabrics?
Joann Fabrics is, is there, and there's actually a tenant in between the two of us, and that would be, uh, it's a mystery room. Uh, we did take about four feet or six feet of their space, uh, but we didn't go that far down. But I did not touch Joann Fabrics.
No, which, not in a prospective...
Okay.
And the restaurant, what is it going to be? What type?
Uh, pub-style food, uh, very similar to what we do, a lot of heavy apps, burgers, pizza, you know, probably six or seven entrees.
And how many, how many people will you employ for the business?
Uh, you know, we were talking about that, this is a little smaller operation than, say, um, our Milford location and our Kingston location. Right now, we're looking to hire five full-time and about 75 part-time. It's a, it's a hefty payroll.
And that's for Broadway?
Uh, you really want to answer this, don't you? Uh, well, we're building a real nice center, and, it's, uh, we're not a leak house, and...
And I, I come from that world, so I'm just, uh, just giving you a hint.
Well, our lanes are going to be black, and we're going to have strings in our pins. So, uh, if you bring your own bowling ball, I may put my head down for a little bit. You may put your head down too, but oh, no. Uh, it's, it's really about the, the entertainment and the fun. It's, it's a great venue, and it's going to look, it's going to look beautiful.
Is it large balls or small balls?
It's ten pins, so, yes, yes, ma'am. And it, it's a lot of fun. I've really had a great time designing this place, um, it's, it's, it's really cool.
Um, we always ask, uh, law enforcement, building inspector, any, any concerns, issues that we should be aware of?
Looking forward to going bowling.
Reese Trapp, how about that? Marlo, CPW, all set?
Everything's on, on target properly. They have a good contractor, we're working daily with them.
And I didn't mention, it's, it's just one entrance into the facility, so we've got really good control, but there are five emergency, the regular entrance plus four more emergency exits. So for the purpose of safety, public safety, we believe we have that covered, obviously, under the regulations, it'll be fully sprinkled as the rest of the mall is, so... How is your operation?
Uh, right now, generally Monday through Friday, it's always confusing to say Sunday through, Jennifer and I went through this the other day, Sunday through Thursday would be, uh, during the week, 11:00 AM till midnight, uh, Friday and Saturday nights, uh, Friday night would be, Friday would be 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM, and then Saturdays would be 10:00 AM to 1:00 AM. So 1:00 AM would be basically when it would be closed.
And the local license is going to run until when? You're going to have it until 1:00?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, Jennifer?
Um, Chief Spike Nabel has also looked over the, uh, license application, and he, he asked for the, uh, hold on the license until the certificate of occupancy was, um, done. So that's, that is the man who's left over there.
And I, I just want to offer another comment. David takes the responsibility of a liquor license very seriously. I've lectured him on it for a long time. I, I think I've done a lot of this work, and I've been involved in, in issues on both sides of it, and, and he has... Not with me. No, exactly. He has one of the most, one of the more sophisticated card reader systems available, so relatively, you know, I, I recognize, obviously, we're in the midst of a college...
Should you say you're going to, he puts the test around?
And so, that's a significant issue for, for you as a licensing agency, and for David as the license holder, and his, his license and his card reader is among the better ones available. Very expensive, very professional. Police officer in Milford who I know who does training there says that his is better than the one they got.
He came in for a grant with cops and shops, and he called me the next week, and he said, "You know, it's pretty embarrassing when I show up there to do cops and shops, and your card system's much better than ours." And I'm here with a grant, so...
And again, we make that comment because we are certainly aware that part of the, of the population that we will attract to this facility will be young, and it's all more concern for everybody.
That's probably why you came up this way too, because it is so populated with colleges, so, I mean, it's a good business, I mean, and I think Hadley has been known that we like business, we like business on Route 9, and, uh, it helps us with our taxes and...
We're going to try our best to make sure we put some money in your pocket.
We wish you success in your business, so I'm going to make a motion to grant his liquor license, and, uh, I'm contingent with, uh, occupancy permit with, with that.
Okay, there's a second amendment, did you, anything else you have to add?
I just wanted to let you know that this will be the first of the special legislation licenses.
Yep.
And so we're into that five, we have a 14, we're five, and this is the five for special aid legislation to Route 9 corridor.
Okay, all right, thanks, John. Okay, um, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and I would like to formally, uh, challenge, Joyce, if you'll accept this, uh...
I go bowling?
John and Jerry to friendly game.
Take the friendly off the table and let the total money...
There's going to be no motions while you're bowling, there's no discussion, and it's about having a good time.
I don't, I don't need to interrupt, we're all, I go, I like what you're saying, but I think that you need to take a separate motion to appoint Susan as the manager. I think the ABCC requires that by second.
Jennifer says no.
No.
No?
Doesn't hurt.
Don't?
You can, but they, we have it for the other.
Okay, if you don't, okay, I just, I think that probably...
She's the manager of my house as well, so this is just fine.
This is, this is a, look, she's your major person. I'll make a motion to have Susan, um, be the manager of this big facility.
Her name is on a...
Pins.
I will second that.
Yep, okay, so, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Good luck, well, again, thank you for the call, and thank you, Jen, thank you for your cooperation, really appreciate it. Timing is everything, so thanks. Good night.
Good luck.
Thank you. Nice meeting you, David. Thanks. Thanks. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Okay, we have a couple of minutes to spare, uh, before our 7:30 appointment, so we can kind of roll it forward. Let's hold off on the budget prep until later, uh, fire department regulations, uh, Chief wasn't planning on being here tonight, did that, was he?
Right, so this, this was something that we had originally proposed for the warrant for the special town meeting, and it turns out it just needs a select board vote, so this is something that we've looked at in terms of, uh, ensuring safety at, uh, global food vendors. The state is supposed to do an inspection of their propane cooking systems. Sometimes that inspection happens, sometimes it doesn't so much, uh, so I think in order to provide for better public safety, that, uh, we should adopt these regulations.
I actually have a problem with the aspect of the, and I need more clarification on it, with the ventilation systems on them. I know that we ran into some huge problems at the fairgrounds in North Anton, at the fairgrounds in Greenfield, with the regulations that were imposed upon, and they were excessive, um, and it was prohibitive to people be able to do their business, so I, I want some input on that, and I need some legislation, you know, a clarification on that before I'm going to, or able to vote on it. The other ones, I have absolutely no problem on it. If we can just hold that aspect off and vote on the other ones, I have no problem on that.
Okay, can I just ask, was, um, so is this entirely under the purview of the fire department? There's no board health or anything else being asked for here?
Well, the board of health would issue the food permit, uh, into the food inspection, uh, but this is for the flammable...
Strictly flammable.
Yes.
Okay, but the, the ventilation that Jerry's talking about, would that also be Mike's call?
That would be Mike's call.
Yeah, this is cutting out the system, is what was existing in a 4H food booth, actually, was in question this year also, we must have heard about that, Jerry?
I did.
Uh, and that was existing, so, uh, they're still trying to get, get the answer to that question, you know, existing for, I don't know, 20 years now?
Okay.
Uh, whether it needs to be updated or not, or whether it's grandfathered in.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I certainly, it's a, it's a good thing to do, to tighten up the regulations, but it sounds like there's some holes that need to be filled. And, um, Joyce, are you comfortable deferring this to a future meeting?
Sure.
All right, we don't have any mobile food vendors expected until springtime anyways, so...
So let's get it, right?
We can take a little bit of time.
Okay. All right, um, well, it looks like we're close enough to our scheduled 7:30, uh, appointment, so are the folks from Pride, yep? At least one.
Good evening.
Good evening. Hey, how are you?
How are you?
Um, so again, for the viewing audience at home, um, we're here to discuss, uh, So again, for the viewing audience at home, we're here to discuss the Pride Station project, and the stop work order had been put in place, and we're looking for an update from everybody tonight.
Again, for the record, I'm Jim Channing, counsel for Pride. With me is Dave Suborn of Pride, the senior project manager, John Furman of EHB, Bob Walden of Pride, and Luke Scholter of Sage or Farrow, whatever, site plan engineer, our architect engineer, and then the Pride representatives. It's my understanding that the invitation tonight is to give you an update as to the project, as I think the planning board is aware, and select board is aware, and everyone in the town is aware that there was a stop work order issued back in September. It's often addressed, we do have a building permit, has been issued, and now we're proceeding into work. In terms of a project update, and going forward, I can tell you that, in my estimation, looking back in terms of what's been accomplished and what is yet to be accomplished, I estimate we're probably sixty percent of the way done. I think twenty percent of it, I'd say, is permitting and planning and approvals, that's been accomplished. Twenty percent of it was, in the specific site, was demolition work, that's all been accomplished. Twenty percent, fifteen percent is the grading, the stormwater, the back, that's been done. Twenty percent is the exterior structure, which is what we're currently working on. The additional, our last twenty percent, would be the interior work. So we have made some significant progress. Obviously, as my understanding, there are some concerns, or I should say, at least there were some concerns. I think we've addressed all those. Obviously, the building inspectors here, I don't want to misspeak as to anything, but by going forward, I think we're just looking to some guidance as to what we can do to, obviously, have an open book, open line of communication, address any concerns of the board or select committee.
Okay, yeah, I mean, we definitely want to hear from our town folks who've been on the front line, and I think just, you know, I won't speak for myself, but there's the classic, you know, some people approach things with the idea that, you know, you plow forward and then ask for forgiveness after the fact. Some people try to cross the t's and dot the i's as they go along to avoid having to have this hearing tonight, and I think what, my sense is that there's been a little bit more of the plowing forward than we had hoped, and we certainly expressed concern about that right up front. But Tim, do you want to kind of?
Yeah, I, in regards to what you just said, I totally agree with that. There was a lot of information that we were asking for that we were not getting in a timely manner, and we were getting them in pieces. I'm not going to point fingers, but it did fall apart on communication. Generally, I usually speak directly to engineers, architects, that's what I wanted to do on this project. I had a lot of concerns, as the other departments did, with regard to our site plan and misinformation that, I will say is misinformation, that was on there. Nothing, and there was a number of things that didn't jive. Certainly, I was getting parts of that dribs and drops. I was checking with all the other departments to make sure that we were getting everything in a one complete package, and that was what I emphasized right from the very beginning. I wanted one complete package with all the information. And when I was called out on site, they had started the footings for the building without a permit in hand, and everybody, I'm sure everybody will attest here, that the only way a true permit is true is if you have that piece of paper in hand. I was called by the fire chief because he had some major concerns out there.
Tank sizes or?
The tanks, the sizes, the placement, the hold downs. With that, I also saw the information, the issues with footings. That's why the stop work order was put into place. We put together a very lengthy list I asked for, and we unfortunately did not receive everything that we wanted, and that's why I continued that stop work at a different date. I think then, with that continuation, we got more of the information that we needed directly from the engineers. And I must say, right now, it is actually going quite well. I have checked in with, my biggest one was conservation. I've checked in with conservation yesterday. They feel very comfortable with the information they're getting in a timely manner from the engineer, and I think that if we don't have any issues, it should be a good project. My concern is that I still am wondering if at a later date that we have actually, everything is actually going to be on that site, meaning the placement of the canopies, and I hear that there are two. Just want that information to me prior to any work that would be relative to those two structures. Right now, I know the concern is getting the foundation going, and it's going well. We did our first inspections today on the footings, and everybody was there that needed to be there. I think it's going well right now.
So you have a pretty experienced team, I mean, how many of these stations do you guys have?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-something?
Thirty.
Thirty, okay, so you've done this at least thirty times, thirty times. So what went wrong here in Hadley?
Each city and town's different. There's no question that this project's hyperstreamized, and I wouldn't say it doesn't deserve to be. Obviously, there's some concerns from the town. They worry that it's been previously addressed, like starting back in January two thousand and sixteen. It was a matter of maybe being too eager or not having an open line of communication. I think the biggest issue that, from our standpoint, and I'm not, again, shifting blame or casting a cast, I just think the biggest issue here was we were getting multiple information from many departments, and there was a need to have a streamlined of communication on both sides. Obviously, we, as the applicant, as the petitioner, as the licensee, hold the ultimate responsibility for that, but in looking back in hindsight, if we were at this point, as to what could have been done better, I think there should have been a more streamlined communication method or mechanism. And that's what I would say went wrong.
Well, it sounds like you had concrete in the ground ready and didn't have a permit in your hand, and we made that perfectly clear when they came in a year ago or so with the liquor license and the size of the building and the alarm systems and everything else we went through. And here we are in front, you guys are right in the front row here now, and you don't even have the slabs poured yet. We don't want this to happen again, quite clearly.
Well, I think I'm, my primary concern is, I don't, you know, I understand that design work is an evolutionary process, but how, I mean, we, the DPW directors looking at one set of plans, the building inspectors looking at two different sets of plans, I mean, how do you have that many sets of plans? I mean, you do understand why, maybe it wasn't streamlined, but if the fire department's got one set of plans, and the building inspector has another, and the DPW has yet a third, and they don't line up, it's quite a burden on the town to figure out which the correct set of plans are, too.
There's two major issues. One, certainly, there was Pride people that were getting together with DPW. There was revisions taking place on those drawings that DPW was asking. Same with fires and all the rest. The problem was that it never got back and changed and modified on the set that should have come here. The major, big goof-up that I saw was that the site plan from day one has always shown a hundred-and-twenty-four-foot-long building. I got a set of plans to review and sign off, which I was very close to signing off, for a hundred-and-twenty-foot. Then I get on site, and the building is shifted from what is positioned on the site plan. Those are the issues. I mean, is that lack of communication? I think it's, it's certainly not a lack of communication on our part. We are very small. We only have one person in almost every single department. The issue was getting the engineers involved in a timely manner, getting that stuff on the drawings and back to us in a timely manner with requests that we were asking that was actually on paper. Because I put it on paper, it did not come back to us the first time, that's why I had to continue that stop work. But again, I'd like to say that now that we've done this and gone down that unfortunate road, I am speaking to the proper people, and I am getting the cooperation, and I'm getting good responses quickly.
Do we have one plan?
Yes, we have one plan now that has been accepted by the town.
And does that plan include the beer and wine section?
Yes.
So conservation?
Conservation.
Planning board? DPW and building inspector all have the same plan?
Correct.
And fire?
And fire, yes.
Okay, so, I guess, I'd just like to say, I mean, we had the conversation about the beer and wine license right up front, and I'm glad that you're happy, you know, things are going by the air, but what's the final drop dead on pulling that if we have to?
So the license renewals were received by this office today or yesterday. They're going out to all of the license holders, current license holders, in the next day or so. They have until November thirtieth to sign them and return them to the town. The town has until December thirty-first to sign them and return them to ABCC.
Okay, so I think we're looking for improved communication performance. If there's any issue with the communication on the town's end, we should have a process where somebody goes timeout, you know, again, we have multiple parties for you to deal with, we're not trying to make it difficult for you, but we typically don't have these issues, so it's not like we have a huge track record here of these type of construction issues. Our folks pretty much know what they're doing. To Tim's point, yeah, we have limited resources, but step outside, we've done commercial projects here before, so I hate to treat this like a performance review, but I mean, it's like, you know, this is kind of the window we're in here. I mean, the warning is out, you're sitting here for a reason. Please follow the letter of the law and the rules that are laid out, and listen to our folks to get this building going. We want you to be a good neighbor, but that word has been used repeatedly, we expect you to be a good neighbor.
And we like businesses, so it's not like we don't, you know? So we're looking for you to succeed just as much as you are. So let's just all work together, and everything seems in place right now, let's just continue on that pathway.
Anything else from the board, our employees? Everybody okay?
There was a few changes that I met with Mr. Suborn this morning, and I requested an updated set of plans. I approved the changes, but there was a few changes made sense on his end, didn't affect us in any way, but I did request an updated set of plans for that. So there's no confusion with the other parties, town parties involved, I did request an updated set.
Just walk me through that. Now, you've requested an updated set.
Wait, wait for a second.
No, you're just perfectly, you're just perfectly right there. You have requested that, and it's gonna get done. Mr. Suborn's gonna take care of what you've asked him to do. Does Tim get a copy of that? Does, and is it Tim's responsibility to disseminate that? Is it your responsibility? Does Mr. Spagnabel get a copy of that? How do we make sure that everybody's working from the same document, and out of respect to the fellows here, if they're getting it to us, and do we ask for five copies of it? And do we stamp a date that this is the newest one, and this is the one we're working for, and we communicate internally so that we understand which everybody's working with?
There's a couple of things that happen. At the very beginning, you want everybody to have the same document. Of course, there's gonna be changes, and there's two ways of handling those. If they're minor in nature, if it's with DPW, it's gonna be handled with him. Generally, at the end, we ask for, if there's numerous changes, that you want that information for whatever reason, for if things are buried or whatnot, you will, we will ask for an as-built drawing at the end, and that will go back to the engineers. They will make all the changes that happen throughout the process on there, and it'll be an as-built, that'll be disseminated back to, most likely, me. I make that decision, yes, if it's DPW, especially with anything in the ground, I will request additional copies to go back to those departments. I'm the keeper of the records, generally with the site and the buildings, so I try to keep everything. But if it's something that I perceive, and I do talk to Marlo, if he's gonna tell me, hey, Tim, I want a draw, a set of drawings on it, and if he says tomorrow, I want a complete set, and I think somebody else should have it, that's gonna happen. That will be requested, and generally, that's never an issue, getting that information.
The hardest part in general throughout the whole town is getting a final as-built print for water, for wastewater, for building, and even for the fire department, in this case, for a gas station, where the gas lines are, where the tanks are located, where the vents are located. All this is pretty important information for each particular department, and that's why we're really pushing these plans now more than we ever did probably fifteen years ago, you know, twenty years ago. So it's real important, and we're really addressing this issue now, so.
And that's why we want that one complete set. We want all that information together in the one complete document.
Mr. Walden?
I certainly second what Tim said. Normally, the process, you say we've done this before, and normally, the process is that we do, we would talk to the departments throughout the process, get their okay, as Marlo has given Dave, and then we would proceed on that, and then give you one as-built after. It's when we're asked to give new sets along the way that all of a sudden, everybody says, well, what are all these sets? Well, the as-built, if we don't, if we're not asked to do that, and we just rely on the as-built, then that confusion will go away.
And the reason I brought that up is, if I have the updated set that Mr. Suborn and I agreed on today, when John or Dennis or whoever goes out to inspect those items before the backfill, they're looking at an updated set in our office before they go, so they're not saying, well, geez, the grease trap was here, how come I found it over there? So that improves the internal communication in my department also, as we move forward with Pride.
Mr. Nahar, we're looking at a listing here of thirteen things that were pointed out that were missing, and I'm gonna assume that these issues have all been resolved or in the process of-
Yes, they've all been resolved.
Okay, excellent.
So David, do we need to actually take any formal action tonight, or this is just?
No, it sounds like everything is going along, and we continue to stand ready to help you with your project.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Keep the lines of communication open.
Sure.
Do that.
Okay, thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in.
You're welcome.
Okay, so seven forty-five, where we are, we have an appointment with the treasurer's office for some planned changes. We're gonna be educated between-
Want to come up?
Yeah, sure. So Linda and Joan are gonna educate us on proposed changes for the Hampshire Group Insurance Trust, as well as the employee option to participate in the mass smart plan for retirement citizens.
So Joan and I have been reviewing the employee benefits, which we do sort of on an ongoing basis. Joan Zuzco's been doing this a long time, and has been through many changes, and we're working on this together this year, meeting with the providers and with insurance agents, both of the ones that, both the ones we have already, and some, looking at options for changing where it might be appropriate. Our goal is to see how we can best balance the interests of the town and the employees on a sort of a cost versus benefit analysis. The cost for the town, some of the benefits, especially the medical ones, we do contribute to, so the town pays in on these. And then there's the administrative overhead, too. We manage it and we oversee it. As far as the benefits that we're looking for as a town, is a smooth, you know, smooth administration of these plans, and to have employees satisfied as they're dealing with them, and keep, so that we don't, there are cases where we need to follow up on, and Joan in particular follows up on behalf of employees, and that's something that we would rather not have from a plan, we'd rather have one that works. And from the employee perspective, the costs to them, obviously, they contribute to every one of these plans, too, out of their withholdings, so they're putting money in on this, and if there is an effort on their half, on their behalf to have to make a claim and have trouble with their claims, that's something that is important to us. We need to have their, it work for them as well. We need to have their, it work for them as well.
What's that split again, Kirby?
What's the split?
The health, the health, the sixty-five town, sixty-five town, thirty-five employees. It just came up to us not too long ago.
And what the other surrounding towns?
And that's just one of the plans. That's the one that the town contributes to that we have. There are other, they have life insurance, disability, short-term and long-term, accident.
Cancer.
There's various other plans that they contribute to as well, which we kind of voluntarily, voluntary, and they generally deal directly with the company, although we handle the withholdings from the payroll when we actually make the payments. So we want to make sure employees are getting what they expected from the plan and getting the best value for the money that they and that we are putting in. So we're here tonight to update select board on changes that are going to happen and others that we are considering in the next year or so. So I want to start with the Smart Plan because that's on track, that's happening. For our deferred retirement, deferred compensation plan, we are moving over those plans to the Massachusetts Smart Plan.
Do you have a copy of this, by any chance?
Copy of.
Or what we're going to be discussing?
No, just what's on the agenda, those three, those three points on the agenda.
Two points, okay.
One, two, three. We're doing the Smart Plan.
So this is for information, is that right?
This is for information, yes, yes. And input. I mean, we're certainly interested in what you have to say. And hopefully, by having this at a meeting, we can hear, this will get out to employees. So if they have some input that we haven't considered, then we would hear from them as well. So the Smart Plan, yes, is the deferred compensation plan. As of December 1st, we are going to move over our deferred compensation plans to the Smart Plan. This is the state plan. As a town, we get to piggyback on the state's plan. They're a much larger operation. They will have oversight of the plan. They will be able to, they will watch the investments and fund management at a level that we are not capable of providing. We think that the benefits to the employees, this is, this plan, by the way, is no cost to the town. This is what, how the employees are having, are being able to put away money for the future. So.
Are these pension plans?
This is the.
This is a deferred compensation plan, kind of similar to a private sector 401K or something like that. The town doesn't contribute, the employee does, and all contributions are pre-tax. And they have various options of where to invest that through this plan.
And historically, how successful are they? Do they provide better options for this?
The State's Smart Plan is far better than what we currently have. We currently actually had three plans over the years, and we are trying to, we're going to migrate them all to the single state-run Smart Plan. Better fiduciary responsibility. They also have better fees for the employees and whatnot, and better plan oversight. In fact, I've had a few companies who've come in. We periodically get salesmen for annuities, et cetera. And when I said I was going to that, they just went, okay. They knew that was it.
We've talked with others, and this is just far and away the best thing that we can do.
What does the Smart stand for?
Oh, yes, we just, save money and retire tomorrow. That's S-M-A-R-T. And this is separate from the retirement plan, the county retirement plan. That's separate. This is voluntarily money that they additionally put aside, both on the town and the school side. So we decided to go with it. We've talked about it a couple of times, though. I think at a couple of staff meetings over the years and then floated this around. And we have heard nothing negative about it. And we've had encouragement from employees, yes, please, that would be much better for us. Because we think the employees will find it better, we are hoping too that this is not just going to be a benefit for the employees currently contributing, but there will be more of an effort to encourage new participation in the plan because we think in the long run, that is, that's good for employees too. So it's in process. Joan got the letters out last week.
We'll be having everyone who is eligible, which is anyone benefited to twenty hours per week or more on a regular basis. Information went out with all paychecks this week to those people. They'll have, the first initial info session is going to be October 26th from 3:30 to 4:30. All employees, welcome. First, then we'll start one-on-one sessions in November. And that's going to start with November 2nd here at Town Hall, and we schedule people on a half-hour basis. And we'll have sessions at the elementary school and at Hopkins and at any other facility if they want to have one at the police department. We can do that. If they want to have one at DPW, we can do that. Anywhere, we have an agent who is close at hand, which is going to be new for us as well. So yeah, we're looking forward to this.
David, Joan and I met with him a couple of weeks ago, and it's really, we really got a good feeling from. And we've had with others before, but the particular agent that we would have is someone I think that people are really going to enjoy working with.
Right, so. So on to the more controversial topic of healthcare.
We want to start with happy. Next is the, yes, the healthcare benefits through the Hampshire County Group Insurance Trust. They have had a decline over the last few years. I think Donald mentioned in some of the earlier meetings, a decline in the trust assets for the group insurance trust over the last couple of years. And in order to stem that decline, there is a review of the, review of the whole situation, and a decision was made to increase copays to the employees, to the users. And this is in addition to what we anticipate will be an additional premium increase coming up. We will not hear about that until December.
And that's entirely under their purview, correct? They, the trust itself has the right to do that. That's not a town decision.
Each town votes at the meetings.
Right, at your.
They each have a weighted vote.
Yeah, okay.
Towards those changes.
So these changes are.
These were already voted. Right. And there are some.
I think when they came in and their presentation, they mentioned that anyways.
Yeah, so this is, this is coming up, and there will be, so there will be increases. We asked Joan Cole today to say, do you have, do you have something written up yet?
Something with clarity, so we could, we could have presented what those changes to benefits are going to be. We still don't have that.
Okay, so you don't know which, like, $15 copay is becoming a $30 copay.
Right.
You just know they're going up.
We do know they're going up.
They're going up at least that.
Everybody's copays. That's a given.
And we're actually, in some cases, not just going up, but we had zero. And we've actually had zero for years. We've had a very rich plan for years.
He was comparing Joan to the GIC.
The state.
Which, we always have to because that, that's what they use as the benchmark. And we have to have equal to or better than in order to remain in the trust.
Yeah, that was TOS plan, it's on view.
Right, the TOS navigator.
That was all in the presentation.
So we're just looking at that they have, we will have rates by December.
Effective when?
Effective for April 1st, actually, or, actually. Also, in all of this, the trust had a conversation about the fact that we have some towns April 1st. And then mostly Hampshire County units are April 1st per start date, and Franklin County units are July 1st. They are now, they are now going to be moving Hampshire County units to a July 1st.
Oh, that's good.
So.
I mean, from the budgeting standpoint, it finally lines up.
And they tell me they will still continue to give our figures in January. I said, that's not going to move, you know, the information back to May, forward to May or something. No, we'll still get our information on rates in January as we do now. We will have an open enrollment period in February as we normally do. In case anyone has been waiting to come on board, we don't want them to have to wait another three months. It will stay at the rates we have now. The benefit changes will not take place until July 1st. We'll have another open enrollment period in May for them. But we will have this information for the April 1st start date. So it's a little bit better for our units as opposed to the different ones. A little more information ahead of time.
So that's, that's going to, that's going to hit, and it's not going to be an easy one, but that's, that's the way it goes, and it's still going to be, it's still better than many other plans out there.
I mean, honestly, the private sector's gone, high deductible plans almost across the board. I mean, so any family deductibles can be $15,000. I mean, it's.
You're not looking at anything like that.
So I think it's going to be important to educate.
Right, it's just not free anymore.
I mean, it still hits at people's pockets, but.
I think $6,000 on the deductible for mine.
Okay, and then the third item is talking about the actual plans that we offer. Well, it's the plans that the Hampshire County Group Insurance Trust offers include Blue Care, Network Blue, which is our Blue Cross HMO, which is what most employees have either at the single, two-tier, or family level. And it's an excellent, excellent plan. I can attest to that. It's always been wonderful for us, and most employees are very happy with that. There's a higher level plan, which some employees have taken. Probably about 25 employees have taken a higher level plan, which is the Blue Care Elect.
That's a PPO?
Yes, PPO, yes. Which is also connected with a PPO level of dental plan, which is higher than the other plan. However, you don't have to worry about, I mean, as far as the town side, the town doesn't contribute to the dental plans, so the town contributes to the other plans. So we were, we were looking at these plans again in terms of what's the cost to town? What's the cost to the employee? Is this worth it, is it not? And of course, you know, we like to think everyone makes this decision for themselves, but we also do have a stake in this, and I think that we have some advisory role in this too, I hope. It's quite a bit more expensive, and I've spent some time, and Joan's worked with us over the years, and we've talked with different employees that are in these plans. I'm not sure why, why the Blue Care Elect, the PPO, is considerably more expensive. And it just seems like, well, it's not that much more expensive. You look at the monthly amount and the contribution, the two sides of it. But when you add them up, the difference between taking the PPO and the HMO version of Blue Cross Blue Shield with the actual additional cost to the town is almost $40,000 for those plans. And the cost to our employees to have those plans is $22,000 as a group. And I think it's time for them and us to look at it and say, is, you know, do you need this? Do we need this? Is this an area that we should be reconsidering?
So I thought the big difference between a PPO and an HMO really was a matter of personal control and choice, right? With an HMO, you have to get a referral. And with the PPO, theoretically, you could jump to, and the example that was always given was, you know, God forbid you have, you know, a cancer or some sort of terrible diagnosis that you don't have to navigate the system, so to speak, to get the referral, to go to Sloan Kettering or something if you wanted to.
Right, you still have to be a provider within that program. There's still this inside and outside, and I think that's what people don't realize. They see it as complete freedom and restriction.
But there's out-of-network and in-network.
Yeah.
So that's which, that's the analysis that you're running.
The network restriction, it means you have to, under the Network Blue, you pick a local provider, your own, your primary care provider, and the referrals are completely within New England, like about five, five states, I think, that they can refer you out to. And many of us have used those services and had all the specialists and therapy and surgeries and everything else that we need. I mean, we're providing this to our Hadley, Massachusetts employees, and their Hadley, Massachusetts families for the most part. Right, and we're not.
There's nothing wrong with the brush.
You know, if you have a bi-coastal family, you know, that might have certain restrictions. I'm not, I'm certainly not aware of that being an issue with these particular families that are taking. So we would like to do an education in sort of, in both ways. We want to know why those choices are being made, and maybe we can convince them that that's not necessary, that maybe they, maybe they would be.
Do you get a booklet from Blue Cross?
We do. We have the.
And what exactly their benefits are between the three.
Yeah, and I sat down with the booklets choice. I'd really like to see, and maybe we'll put it together, maybe it exists side by side. That's what we really need. And I actually.
What we have has that, absolutely. I think one of the things too, the perception is with referrals. Back in the day, maybe when HMO started, it was difficult. It's not what it used to be. So maybe we need to just look at that and the perception of it. But I'd like to talk to a Blue Cross representative too, to say, okay, you tell me. Yeah, good. What's the difference? Just say in your, like you're saying, say you have cancer. Find out what they have to say on that. But it's definitely something we're just.
Has anybody brought any other perspective to the, to us that, as to why they use it or utilize it?
We're just starting on this.
Okay.
And of those concerns that have come so far, to us so far, it was, they were non-issues. It was, okay, it was resolved.
So you're giving us a heads up so that in case.
Since we're here anyways on these other issues. We thought we'd let you know what we were up to in general in the benefits field, and that's one thing that we're, we're looking at.
Good, well, thank you for doing that. If you have any questions.
Yeah, no, the lack of information out of the Hampshire Git is concerning to the local town administrators. And we've been talking a lot about how we cannot communicate effectively to our employees because we don't have the information, and what information we have is not clear enough for us to speak about and, you know, firm and convincing them. So we definitely need that information from the Git.
Can I receive an email today? Because I asked for that today, and Joe Shea is working on bringing that to us. Because that was brought up at our last IAC meeting. They said that, yes, we'll get that to you, just at least on what the benefit changes are. They still cannot give us the rates, and they will not give us those until December.
Which actually begs a question. We, when we voted before not to hold a special election, that was also for the Hampshire Council of Government's position as well. So we don't have a representative at the table right now. Is it possible to appoint or?
Yes, so in Mr. Fitchinsky's case, you appointed until the position came up for election.
Okay, so maybe that's something we can put on the next agenda as well in case anybody's interested in that appointment. Doesn't have to be a select board member, right?
Right.
It could be, okay. All right. Sorry, thank you. Thank you.
Do you think, just before you leave, do you think people just, as far as healthcare, go think to themselves, if I pay more and I get the top of the line, it's going to be extremely beneficial in case anything ever goes wrong? If I can afford it, I'm going to build it an insurance plan? And that they just simply don't understand what you just explained to us? Because I wouldn't have understood it until you explained it to us.
And I think a lot of, a lot of what drives it is the fear of having a health situation and wanting to go to Boston. And that's usually the thing that comes up most, can I go to Boston? And I think that's one of the things that drives the decision.
And we, we have employees on the, under the other plan, the Network Blue plan, who have gone to Boston.
It's education.
But the thing with it is, is they're in network with their position as most of, quite a few of the practices now are with partners. And those partners are all connected to Mass General.
Right, which is a nice change.
Which is a nice thing for us to have now in the area.
It's definitely has evolved over the years. There's.
Be interested to hear more, you know, if you have additional information. I realize you do. Please speak with us, leave us your opinions because we want to do the right thing.
I think the referral thing is, is a big thing that's changed because like, if I get a referral to a specialist, how many do you want? They send one referral, it would be five or 10 visits or something like that, rather than going to your primary once a week for 12 weeks and getting that.
It's much easier.
Okay, thank you. Quickly, I think the union personnel rates is just a ratification.
Right, ratification, what we have at that town meeting.
Okay, does anybody want to make a motion? Just a second. Any discussion on this, or are we good? Okay, so we've ratified town meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
October 14th, 2017.
Or no. Whatever you want.
October 14th, 2017, that was this past weekend. Events that impact on the town. All right, so who would like to characterize what this conversation is about? Would it go to the chief or?
We knew that we were going into a weekend with a lot of events to include. To include. UMass Senior Weekend, Common, Armada, Big Young Men's Club.
Oktoberfest.
Halloween.
Five K race.
That was Sunday.
That was Sunday, yeah.
It was still a weekend, you're absolutely right.
The tractor parade.
Tractor parade.
Parade.
The Deacon thing.
And then the.
Car wash. Dog wash.
Good.
We had some traffic in town, no kidding?
No. We had some traffic in town. Sergeant Cook called me on Saturday about the traffic associated with the regatta, so we were able to work out a plan with the assistance of Superintendent and McKenzie. But there were a number of noise complaints that we received. You all have a copy of the noise complaint that I received in an email. Police Department also received multiple noise complaints. You probably haven't found a great detail on this whole thing at this point.
What's that?
You have finer detail than I had.
Yeah, I think I looked at the log before I came over here, we had a record of seven calls that came into the police department for noise complaints. As far as the regatta goes, we have an after-action meeting set for next week. We're just trying to find a time to sit down with the young lady to arrange that. She had much larger attendance than she expected, which is probably a good thing, because there was a lot of people enjoying Hadley on Saturday. The craft fair.
To be fair, and forgive me for interrupting, but she had contacted us and she did tell us that she was having the event. It was not, nothing was a surprise to us with that, except she was surprised by the overall success that she was enjoying.
That's right, that's exactly correct. She did a, she actually did a very, very good job. I can't speak for the fire chief, but he and I were very pleased with the plans that she had put together. She was very proactive as far as, you know, making sure there was medical personnel and police officers on scene to assist with traffic. We did have to send over a couple of patrol officers to assist when it was, when the event was over, to get everybody out of there, just because of the higher number of folks that she just wasn't expecting. She was estimating between 300 and 400 probably total, and it was probably closer to 600 or 700 people. So, it was a, it was a great success, and it was the first time she's done it. That's what happens sometimes when you do it for the first time, and like I said, we have an after-action meeting planned for next week to discuss if they're going to do it next year and what future plans we will put in place, you know, to maybe be a little bit more robust with our medical and police personnel on scene to kind of follow it.
And then how about the East Street event? Is there a plan to talk to the organizers there about that as well?
That's correct. Actually, I had a debrief, so to speak, meeting with one of the organizers of that event. She has already expressed to me, you know, I explained to her the noise complaint situation that we had. That was really the only area of concern, there was not really a public safety concern. They do a very good job of, you know, boxing those folks in there and keeping them safe. There was one ambulance that had to respond to the scene, but it was for sports-related injury, I don't know what you want to call it, it was two young men playing football together, and they cracked heads, and one of the kids lost consciousness.
Oh.
So they shipped him to the hospital, and, yeah, so like I said, the only issue there was the noise, the noise issues.
And perhaps the content of said noise, I think we have got some complaints.
That was, yeah, that was one of the complaints that I heard. I might have heard that one until today, before today, it was mainly galling, but...
Art is interpreted very differently.
What's that?
Art is interpreted very differently.
Really is. I asked Sergeant Cook, and I can't really tell you how he explained it to me, I can't say it on television, but, yeah, it was painful, so to speak.
There were some stragglers, though, I have to say. I did hear from some people that took a little walk down East Street and...
Yeah, I can only speak to what, like I said, what was called.
And it was sick along East Street as they went along.
Exactly. I can only, like I said, I can only speak to what was actually reported to us, that we would have to respond to.
Hope they did feel good the next day.
You know the answer to that.
Yeah, we had two officers there.
Four, four.
Four officers there, and...
Well, four, there was four officers there that they hired as detail officers. Towards the end of the event, we brought over a couple of extra officers when they were all loading up on the buses, just to be safe.
I don't think there was 20 or 30 people walking down the road. I was home all afternoon, I heard it loud and clear at my house. It wasn't vibrating my windows, but it was very loud.
Tim?
Yeah, unfortunately, over on our street, I had quite a number of people call me and come over. We were at the street that the houses were actually vibrating continuously all day. It started at 10 o'clock and it was a real low bass.
Finished at six, didn't it?
I'm sorry?
Yeah.
Finished at six.
Yes, and I went over after a number of people stopped at my house, and I called the police on it, and the noise did, they did lower it, and it was okay for a while. But the bass was the problem.
Yeah.
The bass was still, it wasn't rocking our houses, but it was, it was, to the extent that it was hurting your ears.
It was still annoying.
But at 4:00 is when things really got intense. They cranked it up, went over there, I was with Sergeant Cook. They did whatever they could, but, you know, there was a number of things that happened. One was the stage was put so it was facing west instead of facing east into the fields, which, you know...
Which Woody Bridge wrote, "Appreciate it."
The, but, yeah, we, the chief and I talked a little bit more. My request was that we're going to look at some, the noise bylaw, so that try to figure out what we can do. But I also suggested that if there was a number of noise complaints relative to the street, it might be wise for the officers to go there. The reason was is because when I went over to the club to see what I could do about it, it was loud, but it wasn't to the point that it was excruciating and hurtful, whereby as soon as we went back, it really...
Yeah, you get weird echoes, and, yeah.
Well, sound travels oddly, and in certain areas, it's going to amplify quite a bit. But I think we can, nobody really wants to stop the event, and...
And luckily, it did finish at six.
Yeah.
So it wasn't like going into the evening, wasn't late at night, even if they did, I mean, they only allow their functions until 10, but even still, it finishes at six, it's a done deal.
But I think that there's an easy way to manipulate this, so it's far less obtusive to the neighborhood.
And they're willing to.
The young men's club has made tremendous amount of cuts on the trees on the side of that, you know, so that's probably a source of a problem if they had it the other way. And I think that they would be more than willing to work with anything that you needed to get that taken care of.
That's really the jurisdiction, I mean, the noise bylaw is, it's your judgment, Tom? Is that right?
We don't have a noise bylaw.
Yes, we do.
No, we do.
Which is what, decimal?
There's a...
No, it's the same.
So what's the noise bylaw then?
Well, what it talks, it talks about the types of noise, whether it be music, or whether it be hooting, hollering, yelling in the streets and things like that. Really, the enforcement that we are used to taking on it is, can easily be described as your standard college party. You know, your college, your college house parties that are going on at midnight.
That's why we invented it originally.
Exactly. So those are the, those are the ways, that is really the main way in which we have always enforced the bylaw. It's very unusual for us to have to deal with a noise bylaw situation during the daytime. There's a lot of different factors that come into play on that, because if we begin to enforce the bylaw, you know, by the letter of the law, we're now taking, you know, we're now going to be enveloping things that we really don't necessarily want to bring into play here, like the pool party, you know, with the loud radio, or graduation parties and things like that, that we get calls for every year. I mean, we, we get calls every year on the Fourth of July, calling in to complain about noise for the UMass fireworks. So, you know, like I said, you'd be surprised some of the things, Memorial Day is a good example, the Common, with, you know, music on the Common, or the Asparagus Festival and things like that. You know, I certainly think that the bylaw, there's probably a time for, time to relook at that and maybe make some changes, because the last thing I want to do is start to enforce it right across the board for things like this. But yes, to answer your original question, it is the discretion of the officers on duty that are there as to how it's handled. This case, we certainly understand that there were multiple people that called and complained. It was decided that turning 2,000 to 3,000 young folks who had been drinking out into the streets without buses there to, you know, basically shutting the party down, so to speak, is really not a good idea. So, as Tim said, you know, we did the best that we could with it, we continued to work with the staff to get the music lowered. They did lower it, you know, each and every time, as the party got, you know, wore on, it, you know, it was loud, it was absolutely loud.
I spoke to three of the board members over there, and they already said they're going to address it completely for next year.
Well, what I can tell you is, you know, like I started out by saying, is I did, I did do a debrief with one of the organizers, and she has already, she's already, she already had made decisions before they even left that day, that she's going to be doing, making some alterations to how, how things were done, how things were set up. She is absolutely, you know, the, when you consider what this party is really, really is, the amount of problems that we have had there are so miniscule, it is unreal. I can probably, they've been, they do two of these a year, and they've been doing it for the last six or seven years, and I can probably count on one hand the amount of arrests that we've had.
But we want to be able to tell Tim's neighbors, the ones that I heard from, many of them, because again, the sound system, that measures are being taken to address it, so that they don't think that, you know, it's being ignored, and then I guess it's a question of whether or not we should look at the language of the noise bylaw.
We need to do that, and I think that there's a little, but I'll find input from the town with regard to some inspections, it's going to be extremely, that takes a little bit of the pressure off the person that's giving it and putting it on us, and we have a little bit more clout to say, hey, you're going to have to do this. And the big problem was, was the way, where the stand was set up, it was in the wrong direction, even from what they wanted from, from the very beginning. But it was too late to change it.
Yeah, once it's set.
But I think we get a procedure in place, with, working with them is going to be okay. But it was, it was an interesting weekend.
And the big winner was juvenile diabetes, which the money was raised for.
Good. So is there anything else we need to do in terms of?
I think the police have it under control.
Yeah. I mean, the number of events on one day.
Generally, exactly, exactly. I mean, at some point in time, we have to, because we are overextended.
If anything went wrong, we'd be a problem.
Well, everybody was on duty.
But I don't think that there's that big of issues.
We would have had to redirect resources, but everybody was on duty.
Correct. Yeah, we were stretched thin as it is with our people in the academy, and we were stretched exceptionally thin this weekend, but, you know...
So, maybe that's something, then, as part of the process, we need to make sure that we have a calendar, so we understand, because I mean, we give approvals for one day for this, and, you know, maybe do a better job making sure we're taking an inventory every time, so that if in fact you think it would be prudent not to allow a date for an event and move it a week, then that should be considered.
That would be wonderful.
When I was stuck on the bridge, the traffic that was being let out coming out of the Armada was all heading back across the bridge, and the people that were leaving UMass from the events that were happening there were backed up to the center of town. So, the traffic was just mitigated, and it was just problematic.
Well, there were some fine gentlemen in uniforms that suggested strongly that we leave town that day, and I took that at face value, and I went to Kennebunk Main, so I didn't see any of this.
At least somebody did.
Went to Hartford with 40,000 people down there.
Oh, see.
We'll throw a raise a ceremony.
Okay, so we got on that topic, then? So...
So actually, it's the police, actually, you always approve a lot of these functions as we bring them before us, we always confer with you about them, so...
Well, you have to remember that, I mean, you talk about...
So we'll keep a calendar, Tim, like you will too.
Absolutely.
And if you feel like you can't handle so many events, then we won't have them.
Sure.
It's your call.
It's not that they couldn't handle it.
No, no, they did handle it. I thought, for the amount of things that were going on this weekend, you know, I think you guys did a great job.
It would have been a perfect weekend for the fire department to have a boot drive on Route 9.
Seriously.
That wasn't moving fast at all.
Yeah, and that one, for sure.
They should have had more.
Good idea. Okay, so thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the input. So now we're going to move on to the countdown.
No, no, let's finish up with these two last ones, so Marla can get out of here.
What does Marla have to be here for?
Cemetery committee?
Oh, I'm sorry, Marla. Yeah, I said historical, okay, cemetery.
It's going to dig his grave.
All right, we'll take, we'll take cemetery first. Thank you, Joyce, for flying cover for me. Go ahead, Marla.
Well, I was asked to be here, I'm not sure what day they've had to present on us. I was here for a little backup.
So we have a, we have a developing situation, both in the terms of the cemetery committee and the historic commission, the volunteer form of government, and like a small town in the valley, we're relying upon fewer and fewer people to fill all the positions that we have. The cemetery committee is now down to three, two individuals out of five. We're in a situation where we're not sure that we can cover the work that needs to get done, marking of graves, maintenance of records, and making sure that the cemeteries are cared for. So we need volunteers, and pretty quickly on the cemetery committee, we have three And also the same goes for the historic commission, I think we're down to two active members at this point out of five. Historic commission is very important to the town of Hadley. They have some immediate business that's in front of them, particularly approving the historic preservation restriction on the repairs to the Mount Warner, Lake Warner Dam. So we need to get...
The Kestrel Trust.
To set up that, well, the Kestrel Trust supplies the historic preservation restriction. Historic commission reviews it, and then it comes to the select board for implementation.
Have we reached out on the cemetery to the churches in town? I mean, not that everybody, you know, who's buried belongs to a church, but on the other hand, a lot of the burials do go through, most Holy Redeemer or the Congregation of Church. I'm just wondering if maybe getting it on the bulletin suit, so churches themselves have cemetery committees internally. I'm wondering if there are folks who might be interested in the greater good of the town and participating in some way.
Sure, get the word out.
Okay.
And they're both on our local access, I think it's been running and running and running and running.
Right. So, one of the things we had talked about at some point was the idea, and I'm trying to squeeze all this stuff in, but having some sort of a fair, if you will, or an event that people were invited, kind of like at colleges, you know, when the freshmen show up, they have everybody with their little booths around, and they talk about the different clubs you can join and why you should join them. But having something promoting the town, these types of governmental positions, and I mean, it would be nice, I don't know if we did it as a standalone, if we'd get that many people, or if we tried to wrap it around some other event happening in town where people would already be...
The opening of Bowling Alley.
Yeah. I was going to say Helping Hearts for Hadley Schools. Have a booth there. Or some kind, or some kind of little history of these offices.
You can have a big book, you can write people in.
What they've done and what they're doing, and what, there's not much action for some of these particular...
Right. I mean, it tends to be word of mouth, I mean, you know.
To set up a booth at the polls.
Oh, yeah, what about November 14th?
November 14th, set up a, sign up.
David, is this something that we could talk about at the department meeting?
Sure would be.
Okay, that'd probably be a good first step, and then, okay.
Because there's going to be people coming out for that.
Right, right. Okay, and then the other thing was on the historical commission, I was talking to at least one member of the historical commission, thinking, you know...
Only two left.
Well, you can just give a 50/50 shot who it was. But the people are more inclined to join something if they understand, you know, it's one thing to read a mission statement, but it's also good to have something like media to work on. And I was... And I was, again, just don't, just, this is just a conversation, but talking about the town green and whether or not it might be worth looking into the possibility of trying to obtain some sort of grant money or something to kind of promote the history of Hadley. You know, we've got that, that one end that's just got like the little fountain or whatever on it and a couple of benches and things like that.
Yeah, while we're on that subject.
Well, let's, let her finish her subject.
Well, just, you know, maybe some people who might be, and it seems like the historical commission, you know, you go to some towns and they have like those placards or whatever where you kind of walk around and it talks about, you know, here was the house of so-and-so or here was the first buyer, you know, whatever.
That was, that was what they used to do in the school when we had our teachers that did that.
They'd be walking around, yeah.
History, yeah.
But, you know, just to promote it.
You've done that.
Walked the fifth grade around.
So maybe, you know, again, if that was something that people are interested in pursuing, it would be logical for the historic commission to kind of pick that up and run with it.
You know, I know, I mentioned that a couple of times over the past four years was similar to the situation is tour for the high school kids, like through the water plant, through the wastewater plant, something like that.
Yeah.
To see if they're interested in it, you know, that, that's gone nowhere yet, but, you know, somehow we need to get the people more involved in this community, you know.
So if I further the discussion with the historic commission, at least about the town green, would anybody here be opposed to that conversation just taking place?
No.
Okay. All right, so maybe we can try to gin up some interest there.
And you may want to involve the school with that, with the history class to.
Oh, yeah. They've got to have kid, kid participating on the committee and.
Yeah, you could also have a.
Founder students.
So I imagine this is the fun part of being a selectman and a member of the finance committee because you're out the community, you know all these people, you know these people's interests, get to do a little bit of wine and cheese with them and get them on these boards.
We can't afford wine and cheese.
No, we got enough of wine for most of them. I know my friend anyway.
Got enough wine, need more.
All right, yep, so anything else on this topic?
Yeah, comment?
Yep.
Water fountain in front of Town Hall and waterfront fountain on the common.
Okay.
Since we've got Marla here. What are the chances of getting them both working again?
Money.
Well, if we get people that are interested in donating their time and equipment to get it done.
Is the water going to drain or is it going to be reused? It's not just going to run, run down the drain, is it?
No, that's recirculated on the common.
On the common, okay.
The one in front of here was the fountain. An alliance club actually.
Has the one on the common.
Has the one on the common.
Right.
But there hasn't been water in it for 10 years now.
Water in it?
One more.
Any idea what's wrong with it?
Probably galvanized pipe, so.
I think the one out front is the problem because it's.
Yeah.
I know.
It would have to be reconned with a piece of X or something.
I know we don't want to move it.
The one out front's not connected to anything.
What's that?
The one out front, I don't think it's connected to anything.
Did he get up this street again for that? Was construction.
I remember we had this discussion. I can't remember if there wasn't.
Should have done that one, the road was dug up.
So can we put in a ticket?
For what one? If there's no water going to this one out here, would it?
Well, it's a ticket, so you can investigate it as, and he'll prioritize it with all those other tickets. Or work orders, wherever you can.
I agree, my favorite word.
You wanted a fountain, you got paid at work.
I want to say there wasn't, but I don't.
I know we had a discussion during the construction and we had routed up and.
It'd be great to know.
Yeah, I don't remember.
I remember when we dug the big hole out here to tie the eight inch and we were pretty far from the fountain, we would tap and everything. I have to look back at my notes too.
Okay, all right, so we good with those two topics then? Marla can go home? Good night.
Well, yeah, I mean, a little bit, not to jump back to the cemetery thing, but we are in a position where we really don't have anybody answering phones after hours in a position to answer, you know, the funeral homes or anything else. The one volunteer we had is, is no longer going to do it. That individual is still going to do cremations and mowing of two, of two of the cemeteries. So I, I think there probably needs to be a little more discussion on where, I mean, not only fulfilling the committee, but.
You want to volunteer?
Where we go from here.
Oh, no. But I have some ideas.
Good.
You know, work on those.
Okay.
Give it tomorrow.
Yeah, I'm talking to Marla back.
But during the day, I think we've been, we've been piecemealing it between David's office and the DPW office, you know, on regular hours. We're able to take care of some of that stuff right now.
Okay, yeah, so we'll see what.
Do you have a list of duties that they would have to do?
That's what I'm just thinking is, it's good to have like bullet and this is what you need to do.
This is, this is why it was supposed to go on the DPW when the DPW was formed, but because of the issues, people don't pass away between eight and 3:30. We kind of have a problem with that.
What needs to be done after 3:30 in the afternoon at a cemetery?
Somebody just needs to answer the call for someone who's deceased.
And for what?
Find, find the particular plot they may have.
Why does that need to be done at eight o'clock at night?
Why can't it happen?
Why can't it?
It doesn't have to be done at eight o'clock at night, but somebody's got to, somebody answers the phone.
Friday night, somebody asks to.
To verify that they, they're cremated and going to be buried, they're open for the weekend.
Yeah, I can say on the weekend.
There's a short turnaround, a lot of some of these services are very short. I guess is, that's where the phone calls come in.
Do you have an uncalled person?
No.
No, the committee was handling it for years and years and years, for 300 years now.
There's many moving pieces to this and everybody, the little piece, but we kind of got to bring it together to understand how we're going to handle it as a division going forward. I think it's a much larger discussion than.
We'll give out your cell phone number.
It's all over the place anyways.
Okay, so let's, let's keep our eye on the stand. Terry, if you want to talk to Marla about whatever ideas you have and then.
If you could get me some bullet points toward it entails.
And I'm gathering the bullet points because there's five or six different people that are doing different things with different bullets, so I'm still gathering information on that.
Okay, well, I mean, it makes sense, we need that before we can try to tell people what they're.
It's just been passed down and passed down and passed down and passed.
Okay, pass it along.
It's come to, to a halt now.
Okay, all right, thank you. So, final item for the evening, I believe, is the budget cycle. So David, you proposed a countdown and right out of the gate, I argued with you about your first item.
You wouldn't be the first.
Yeah.
So we talked about doing FY19 in a different way and I think that we're in a situation where I've proposed a countdown calendar. That's not going to work, at least off, for the first meeting, which was, I had proposed for next Wednesday, October 25th, with, starting with an all boards and committees meeting that would be moderated by the select board. I think that we need a little bit more time to prepare for something like this. I did talk about it at the staff meeting, so it is on people's radar.
But, but not all of the boards are represented at the staff meeting is the problem.
If they don't show up.
Well, but again, like you don't, we don't expect the Board of Health to be there or, you know, and we had one planning board member who used to come, but hasn't been there lately, so.
Okay.
So I think that's the issue, is making sure that the actual boards are notified.
Right.
And then they also want to know what the agenda is.
Right.
Yeah. Which seems reasonable.
Absolutely.
Yep. Okay. So, so I, and that's, you know, that's why the conversation I have with you today was I just think October 25th is too soon, so could we do it another, the first or the 8th of November?
No reason why we can't do that.
Okay.
You want to give, you want to have enough time to process the information that you receive from the, the input from your boards and committees and department heads before you organize a public forum on the budget.
Well, you know, I'm thinking with proper notice, it'd even just, one more week, if, if we set some notification out this week that we're holding an all boards meeting, again, the question's going to be, what's the agenda? So.
Are you, are you ready to draft that tonight?
Sure.
So what do you think the agenda should be? I, I talked to one member of the planning board about, you know, their master plan update. They want, they're talking about, I don't know what happened at their meeting last night, I didn't, I didn't watch it, but they were, they were looking for audience with the select board to kind of give us a summary and make sure everybody had a copy and walk through that. I think at the all boards meeting would be good to give people just the executive summary.
Yeah.
So that people actually know what the master plan update says.
We need time to look at those, I mean, for sure. We just got it tonight.
Yeah, that's what I mean, but for the all boards meeting, I mean, everybody there wouldn't have a copy, but at least it could be available on the town website by then and people would have it, had a chance to look at it. So that was, that was one thing I thought would be worthwhile to talk about.
Absolutely.
Okay. What other things could we talk about?
Well, I think that's one of the problems that we all wrestled with towards seeing it, preparing for the special town meeting back in October was, what do people, what do the boards want, what do the people want? And it would be best if we to address FY19 with that information already in hand, so that we knew that people were, had an appetite for this proposal or that proposal, that the functions of the towns and the needs of the departments are being handled by this budget or that budget proposal. So, so going up front with the, the all boards, you can hear from your departments and you're from the committees and from your volunteer boards, what are the functions that they perform and what are the needs that they have in order to maintain those functions? And then go to the citizenry with a, with a, with the beginning of a plan and talk about, okay, so this is what we have in mind going forward. We've been very clear in the past years of, one, for two years in a row, we supported the schools in their hour of need. And then we switched our focus over to, to public safety, first the police department and then the fire department. So what is the, what is the focus for FY19 going to be? Where do you see your, where do you see your, your services not making the needs within the, within the community?
So it's not a budgetary issue, it's a communication issue. We're, we're there to talk to the school about the fields and what's going to be done and what the future's going to be and how that's going to progress. I assume the library and the senior center will, in that it's just prior to the vote that they would want to, you know, campaign and, and let us know that their needs and why they're asking for more support and what they're doing. I believe we, the fire department is getting their additional fire personnel, should be communicating with everybody what that benefit is going to be to the community. I think Chief Mason's staff has been increased by three last year. And I think that helps people understand why the budget's gone to where it's gone to and where it's at. And then I think we'll bring it all back to, to people, to understanding potentially next year, what we'll be looking at spring town meeting for budgets and, and what, we've, we've told everybody that we're having trouble putting A and B together to make C. So there's ideas that are going to be brought forward and these are basically some of the smaller ideas, whether it's a split tax rate, it's an override, it's cutbacks in services, it's whatever it is that we can generically put on the table. We haven't, we'll have no answers on the, on the first or on the eighth to bring to them, but what we will have is ideas that, and, and an idea as to what we need to do and what we need to close for a gap. And maybe we could have a little feedback from the boards and the committees and the town fathers as to if there's something that we haven't thought of that they could bring to the table. And, and that should be pointed out to them in advance so that they can bring that to the table and, and, you know, we'll all be at the same place.
Right.
Let's listen if maybe somebody's got an idea that we haven't thought or heard of.
Yeah, I, I completely agree with you. I think what we want to avoid is having it come across like we're expecting everybody to make a presentation about what they do and how they do it, because there's not enough hours in a day for, for that. But if it's laser focused on going into the budget, this is the, you know, 5,000-foot overview of where we're at right now as we enter the cycle, we, we don't want to be sitting here in March and then have somebody here screaming saying, hey, you know, I've been completely ignored, I have this dire need and we've missed it, so.
And David said it like three or four times, and this is the problem I have and this is a problem that a lot of people have. Wants, this department wants, this department wants, this department wants. It's a needs basis, not a wants basis. The wish list has to be dealt with a little at a time.
Well, this is not.
You can't just keep doubling the budget because they want it. If it's a, if it's a needs and, and you justify it, then that's fine.
But, but don't you agree this is a good forum for, for people to toss out not only their needs, but also opportunities that they see to change how we're delivering services that may result in savings, even if it's one, two, three years down the road and you need to make an investment now to, you know, get that savings later? I'd like to hear that so it can find its way to the, you know, capital plan or, or whatever else we, we're working on.
All right, so what night are you going to have it?
So what do people think, the first or the eighth?
Eighth. Give you time to put it together and allow people enough time to, to plan for it, is the, is the way I say. And let's communicate as soon as possible so that, you know, the, the planning board does have a, a meeting for a little while now, so let's get to the boards.
Where do you have such a thing?
The over at Hopkins.
That'll be eight? You got to clear it with them.
Absolutely. First and foremost.
Yep.
That would be like a seven o'clock start or a six o'clock start?
We should probably, if we can do it at like 6:30 would probably be better. Do you, you know, are you okay with that? What, seven?
Seven's good.
Why seven? And then it goes later.
I'm just trying to get the time in it. People need to, more time, I don't want to start at seven, but I would not at eleven.
And then it's also getting dark now, so people don't want to drive at night.
It'll be dark by five o'clock.
Eleven.
Yeah, because it's after.
Clocks change.
After daylight setting, sun goes away.
That weekend.
Okay.
So what was that hour?
Six thirty.
Six thirty?
Six thirty, okay.
We're inviting everybody, right?
All boards.
All boards, yeah. And department heads, yeah, we, we invite the department heads as well, right?
Yep.
I don't think that's a bad time to talk about cemetery or, or historical commission either. I mean, that's a nice time to point out the needs there as well.
Yep. Okay, so if we're not doing that next week, are we having, do we want to meet on the 25th and skip November 1st? I know Joyce has a conflict. Before we get into the rest of your schedule, I'm just trying to get through the next, does anybody have a preference?
What's the workload like?
I had, I had worked, I cleared the decks for the all boards meeting for the 25th, so I don't have very much on, at all on there. It could be a business meeting till that clears up routine matters.
When?
And they can be added in any way.
We're not meeting the 25th.
We had all boards, Joyce.
Figure it out.
We had all boards meeting on the 25th, we did.
I know, but we're not doing it.
And David's point is now if you have a problem and a conflict on the first.
Yeah.
Then should we try to plug in the 25th and not do the first?
I don't care if you do the first, I won't be here. I got CPR, so.
Joyce doesn't care.
I can't be here, I have to do my CPR certification.
Sure.
Okay.
All right, so we're not, we're not doing the 25th, we are doing the first. All right, so we're not doing, we're not doing the 25th, we are doing the first.
Right, okay. All right, and then David, you want to roll through the rest of yours here? The schedule?
Well, the public forum on the budget for November 15th is not going to work.
No. How about the last week of November after Thanksgiving, whatever after Thanksgiving is?
Thanksgiving's early this year.
Isn't it? Yeah, so it's almost a whole week after?
I realize it's still before Thursday, but I think it's the 22nd.
It's the 23rd.
23rd.
Okay, so maybe the 29th then, we could plan a public forum?
Yeah.
Why are you making faces?
I'm making faces.
Are you around, are you going anywhere?
I'll be around.
He's got CPR training.
Yeah, so Thanksgiving's a week.
CPR for the town. CPR for the town.
I'm around.
Don't get her all shored up, she's not going to be here. Be nice and quiet.
I don't, I don't make fun of you when you're not here, Jerry. I think you've had more time off than I have.
I suggest you go back and look at the tapes real quick.
It's getting late.
Okay, all right, so move out.
December 6th doesn't work either because you need enough time to digest.
So just a week later.
You need to digest, you need to, you need to be giving marching orders to your departments at that point.
So change that to the 13th?
So I would push that back to the 13th.
Okay, and then so when are, when is this, so the select board is meeting on November 1st? The eighth is the forum? Is there any tri board meetings in there? This is what I'm thinking.
Wait, you just said the, which, which month are you in now? Because the eighth is the all boards meeting.
Well, you got all the boards there, school committee should be there, I mean.
And what's the forum for at this point that you're talking about?
The public forum is to provide, get public feedback on some of the general directions of the town to be going in, so.
But it's not, there's no town meeting at that point?
No town meeting, but it's an opportunity for you to communicate with the voters who are likely to be at the town meeting.
What do you want to communicate with them? This is where I'm missing because we haven't even done anything of what we're going to be doing.
So what?
So what are you going to tell them? Which I think is the point that Terry was making, that we really should have the finance committee and select board at least meeting in advance of the public forum to say, okay, this is what we learned, are we heard at the all boards meeting? Let's figure out together what that means, what our march, what we think the marching orders should be and then bring that to the public to see if they're in alignment with what priorities are being voiced.
The tri board meeting?
For by board.
For by board.
Yeah. No. You're giving me that face, David, what does that mean?
I am, I am.
Yeah, so what do you mean?
I mean, okay, so I can see the public forum happening after you've given your marching orders to the departments.
Yeah, I think the public forum is too early to tell you the truth.
Yeah, nobody's going to be ready. Your, the finance committee and Fox Program, they're going to put all of that together by then.
Well, there was some talk about having a retreat and I think we should get back on that as a topic.
Yeah, we need to get back on that.
I'm not going anywhere with you.
You can make all the faces you want, Joyce. It won't even be on TV, no one else will see them.
Well, you can't really meet.
Well, David, tell us about it.
All right, so I'm getting tired here, so I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not tracking with everything that's on the table at this point. Yeah, so we, we talked about a retreat in order to improve the communication between the finance committee and the select board with respect to expectation because the roles that you follow as well as the working collaboratively on a budget that we can bring to town meeting with in a unified way. I've talked to you, asked that Brian West be a moderator of this, he has agreed to do that. I've talked to my colleague, up in Deerfield, Wendy Foxman, who is a trained mediator, and she's willing to help out. She suggested that the chairs of the two committees get together and have like a planning meeting before you enter into a general meeting. We also need to thread the needle with respect to the open meeting law and compliance with that.
What are the issues there?
The issues are that you need to have an opportunity to communicate in an open and frank manner and sometimes the presence of cameras can have a chilling effect upon that.
But is there like legal mechanism for that?
Yeah, other towns do it, so I need to, I need to come up with a solid way of making sure that we respect the, the letter and the intent of the open meeting law as well as being able to provide you with a way to communicate freely and frankly.
Okay, so we're having.
So as a first step, do the chairs agree that having a mediations session in order to set the table for a larger group conversation, is that going to work for you?
Um, yes.
I think it needs to happen sooner than later.
Yeah.
And I know Amy's watching on TV, she told me. Send us a text, Amy.
So are we suggesting that that happen at some other time of day or a different day of the week? Or a Wednesday meeting or?
Let me, let me make a couple of phone calls, so I'll coordinate schedules with folks.
Okay, but in the meantime, we should probably have people put something on their calendar to lock in dates so we're not scrambling as we get towards the holidays, right?
How does the 25th work for you?
What?
October.
Oh, next week, I'm at a town.
You're not, you're not there, we're talking about the chairs.
The chairs, yeah.
Oh. Okay, I can do the 25th.
Okay.
I, I think that should be good for me.
I know Wednesdays are not always good for you.
Yeah, but I think that one, I might have one possibility, it won't work, but I'm, I'm not thinking it's that day, so.
Okay, so I'll email everybody and see if this.
I think the 25th will be okay.
Okay, so the 25th is just a planning meeting with you and the chairs? Is that what we're saying?
Yes.
You and the chairs, I'm a chair.
The chairs, right, right.
Amy's chair, yeah, okay.
Okay.
And what time are we doing this?
Um, seven o'clock works for folks.
Okay, and then November 1st, regular select board meeting, sounds, Joyce?
Is that going to be a tri board?
Well.
You got all boards to follow.
Yeah, we got all boards to follow. So.
I reckon not having, have a tri board. We have, because our meetings are first in the Thursdays of the month.
Right.
So we go back to back.
Yeah, like we're all meeting tomorrow.
So it seems like November 1st should just be a normal business meeting of the select board. One of the things, David, we need to do is the chief presented, I mean, we haven't gone back and accepted the goals that were recommended from everybody, right? And we need to do the chief's performance review. So November 1st, everybody okay doing that?
Yeah, and he'll be here to talk about what we postponed from this evening regarding the new regulations.
Right, yep, good. So we can put that on the agenda?
Okay.
Okay, and then November 8th will be the all boards meeting. People will have time to get ready for that. And then November 29th, we're talking about a public forum. So are we meeting the 15th? We're not meeting Wednesday before Thanksgiving, I'm pretty confident of that.
So it's going to be in your kitchen while you're making your stuff?
That's right.
I would say that November 15th is our regular scheduled pick list, third Wednesday of the month.
Okay, just making sure. Okay, and then what about December?
Well, the 29th then, right, is going to be.
Yeah, so last week of November and then we normally try to keep a light schedule in December.
So when's your, when are your meetings in December?
Well, I would imagine.
Why don't you just do the second Wednesday?
I'm thinking, yeah, just the 13th. And then keep the, you know, 20th and 27th skipped because we normally do a two week skip, right?
So just the 13th?
Yep.
So 13th, you're handling all the licenses that need to be coming forward for the 31st?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay, so do you want to rework the schedule, David, then, with these changes in mind?
I shall indeed.
Is that perfect? All right.
You don't need us anymore, do you?
I don't, I don't need anybody else. There you go. I've got to go home. Is everybody okay?
Yeah.
So the master plan was just distributed today from the planning board.
Is that in our email?
It should be. I don't think it's in your email, it's probably in the box downstairs for you.
It's this big, I don't think it's in the email.
Hopefully we've got an electronic copy.
How many copies of it is it? Do we share one?
Thirteen million of them.
No.
Oh, okay, so we should go get that on the way.
And I'm going to post it on the website, so it should be available on the website.
Oh, okay.
Okay, now, Spence? Thank you. Jerry?
The Hadley Mothers Club Holiday Fair is going to be November 18th. It's from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. There are 60 vendors, they are already all set up, they've been set up for over a month now. They've, they sold out completely, Matt. Exactly. Come shop for the holidays, a visit from Santa, and we have a brand new Santa this year. For those children at home watching, it's the same Santa we both see. Spoiler alert. It's going to be a lunch menu, a silent auction, hourly door prizes, baked cable. Bring a non-perishable food item for the Hadley Food pantry and get, receive a wrap ticket. So everybody, if you could, please help support the Mothers Club November 18th and we'll be announcing it again, the holiday fair. Thank you.
Great, anything else? David?
So this is the, the insert that I proposed to put into the water bills that announces the November 14th ballot questions. Provides a copy of the legal language of the ballot questions as well as a brief explanation as to what people are voting on, so with your permission, I'll send it out.
David, we have a backside to that, is there any chance we can get on there? What we have for openings on all boards and committees so that we can have that available and make use of the second side?
Very good idea.
Yep.
Please.
Okay. All right. Two condolences tonight. I'd like to send condolences to Ingbor Fretegs, his son Christopher and wife Melanie live here in Tably, our condolences to their family. And I'd like to also send condolences to Jessica Spankenable. Her grandmother Sylvia passed away and to her and her family also, our condolences.
Okay, nothing else, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody, thank you. Bye.